You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the August 8, 2023 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education Meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance, and I also say hello to our Cable 2 viewers. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Good and loving God, our source of light, love, and wisdom, bless us as we begin this vital strategic work on behalf of our students. It is our privilege and our responsibility to support, foster, and advance the mission of our district. Give us foresight by which we plan for the future, give us confidence to discover and explore new possibilities, and give us wisdom to discern what is right and good and just. Send your creative spirit upon us. We ask for your guidance and grace to use our talents for the advancement of our students, teachers, administrators, and staff, and we ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Our next order of business is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve? The agenda is written?
Aye.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Coon. Any discussion?
Did we, Chair Kaplan, did we need to add that item from the Buildings and Grounds Meeting to push that work for action tonight to get the architect thing going?
Oh. I think it was going to be the end of August was when we needed to do it.
Okay. I didn't know if we needed to. So we're good? Okay.
Yes, I think so.
Sorry.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. If you have signed up to speak, we ask that you sit near the aisle seats closest to the podium. Please be kind and respectful and direct your comments to me as Chair, and know that we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. Our first speaker is Nathan Parrish.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm coming as a member of the Coalition for Equity in Public Education, and the item I want to address is the Title I application. I had sent some questions that I was just reviewing, a response that I received, and so I'm trying to refocus some of my remarks here based on some clarification. So my concern and our concern is with the allocation of the funds. There are two parts, there's allocation and implementation. I'm no expert on Title I. It's very complicated. I certainly defer to people who know a whole lot more about it than I do or our group. But as I look at the allocation distribution here, the district continues to use a weighted system of allocation and a banded system of allocation of the Title I funds. In 2021, when the Coalition put forward its nine recommendations to the board, we recommended that the district adopt a per pupil basis for the allocation of all Title I funds. So what does that mean effectively here? For example, it appears to me, and I stand ready to be corrected, that there are eight schools who are Title I eligible but are not going to receive Title I funds in this allocation pattern. Those would be Haynes, Caleb's Creek, Clemmons, East Forsyth, Stedgen Garden, Connersville, Morgan, and Jefferson Middle. I say they're eligible because it appears that they're all above 35% low-income percentage in their student composition. But because of the way the money is banded and allocated, these schools are receiving no Title I money for the Title I students who are in their schools. So for example, just to give a number, at East Forsyth High, that's 731 students. If the minimum distribution was applied at 703.97, that would be $514,602.07 that they are not receiving in Title I resources for their Title I students. So really, the question that I would have you address is, what is the justification and the rationale for excluding schools from receiving monies for their Title I students who are Title I eligible schools? And is this weighted and banded system really better than the per pupil basis in which it should be distributed on a minimum basis to each school based on the number of students who are identified as at risk? So those are my comments tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alan Daniel?
I would like to address the Code of Character Conduct and Support. The board had a workshop that I attended back in the spring, and at that time was presented with the data for the school year to that point, and it showed something in the neighborhood of 60-some thousand discipline referrals that had been written for somewhere in the neighborhood of 11,000 to 12,000 students. And at that point, I asked for in person and also submitted a public records request to see that data, the detailed data, and it showed what the consequences were, whether it was ISS, OSS, how many days of OSS, and it showed by demographics. It showed the data in lots of different ways except by school. And I think that's, and I was told that I would receive that data, and I haven't to this point. I really believe that the district owes it to the families of this district to be able to look and be informed about what is going on at their school, and especially at this time of year when parents are making decisions or students are making decisions on what school they would like to attend. Since we do have choice, one needs to have all the information available to them to make an informed choice. And if we're not giving people all of the information about all of the schools, then we really aren't giving them a choice. And the only reason one can think of for not sharing that information is that you would not like the choices that people made if they have that information. So I encourage you to be more forthcoming with that information. If you look at the websites of most of the major districts in the state, you can find their audits, you can find their budgets, history going back years, all the detail you would ever want to know. I submitted a public records request to Charlotte Mecklenburg system. I can go on their site and see my request and their response to it. And we have that stuff out there, but there's no way to search it. So if anybody has ever asked the question I want the answer to, I can't know without asking the question. So I would just encourage the board to be more forthcoming in all sorts of information, but specifically on tonight, that code of conduct information by school. I think parents need to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Katie Sonnenle?
Hi, my name is Katie Sonnenle. I'm a parent in the district, and I'm here to support the R3 program that's on the agenda later tonight. This is something our community really needs. Students and families need it, but also our community. And our community is only going to thrive when our children have what they need to feel supported and feel successful. Going through the PowerPoint, I was really impressed with the trainings that the staff are going to get, and I would love to see, obviously, that staff get all those trainings, but eventually the entire district, everybody who's interacting with kids, get those trainings about restorative practices and de-escalation and all of those things. I think if you've worked in an environment with kids a lot, I've been a teacher, I've been an administrator, I have my own kids, behavior issues, which I've seen in all those environments, they're a form of communication from a child, saying that I'm not getting something that I need. I don't feel supported, I don't feel safe, I don't have somebody that cares for me, whatever it is. And these kids need to feel that. They need to feel supported, they need to feel valued and safe, and not like they're disposable and we're just kicking them out of school. Because what does that send to them? Like, we just don't need you, and we're not going to help you for that five or 10 days that you're out. So a program like this is really important to put these supports in place. It's an important step toward creating a healthy and whole community. But I also want to highlight, you know, the kids that are being sent to the office every single day, they're missing a ton of instructional time, too, and I don't think there's really any way that that gets tracked. When I was volunteering at a school in the front office, it was the same kids every day by the end of homeroom. I was like, hey! I knew all their names by the end of the couple of weeks I was helping out, you know, trying to help them calm down, regulate. That's just a really hard thing for the kids to miss, both the setting of the day by the teacher and also just to be in the office all the time. Nobody wants to be, you know, that kid. And then as far as transportation goes for this program, I really hope the district can figure that out, whether it's working with the city, who also has buses, working with another nonprofit in the community that we could borrow or somehow use buses to partner with. That's going to be really key, because Fulton Family YMCA, as you all know, is pretty far out and not that accessible. And a lot of the children who are going to be in this program really are going to need transportation help. And the kids who need the transportation help the most are probably some of the kids who also need the program the most, because they're maybe missing other supports in their lives. And also, I noticed that parents are required to attend orientation. If a parent isn't able to be there in person for orientation, or a family member isn't able to be there in person, is there some way that they can still participate in the program if their parent has to work? You know, we don't want to have parents missing their wages and money to keep roofs over their head to go to something maybe they could call into or find another way to do it after hours before. And then finally, my last 20 seconds, I just wanted to advocate for that we continue funding, whether it's Title I or other funds, in an equitable manner, not necessarily equal across the board to every single person. I think we know every community has different needs, every school has different needs, every student has different needs. We have to look at who needs what to make that work for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Easter?
Good evening. I wanted to officially introduce myself as the current president of the Forsyth County Association of Educators. I have already had the pleasure of working with several of you at different capacities in the past several years to advocate for students, employees, and families, but I look to continue that work in partnership with our local educators' union. Along with introducing myself this evening, I also wanted to speak on a specific action item this evening. FCAE has worked very hard to try and move this district away from contracting out our employees. This was even a question asked by FCAE to the board members we interviewed and then endorsed during elections to represent us. I ask that you reconsider contracting with Winston Staffing Solutions to hire cafeteria workers this year. While I understand that this decision is being made to fill vacancies, to start the year off right and not struggle, there are several issues that come with contract companies. We advocated to county commissioners with you in June, and we asked for more funding to finally give our classified staff a decent raise that they waited for for years. However, now we have several sections of our classified staff that are now underneath several different contracts, contract companies, and I'm not really sure how that will weigh out on how people are getting paid. But we currently have S.E.E. representing most of our custodians, E.S.S. representing our substitutes, and now we want to lump our child nutrition employees up under Winston Staffing Solutions. I hope that this district will value our education support personnel so that they don't think that a company can make a better decision putting someone in our school than we can. From my understanding, not all contract workers got the Esser bonuses because they were not considered Winston Forsyth County employees. They come to us for help and/or representation referred by employee FCAE members of the union. Unfortunately, we are not able to cover contract workers. Please understand that if we are all working together, we all deserve the same benefits and inclusion into our district. I appreciate you considering this when making further discussions and decisions made on contracting more of our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is the superintendent's update.
So I just wanted to start by celebrating 40 more students who crossed the stage last week, so we continue to get kids to that finish line, which is going to open doors for their future. So that was summer graduation last week. I know Board Member Bohannon was there on behalf of the board to bring welcome. All right. So yesterday, also, early and middle college students and staff had their first day back to school, and so had a chance to get out there and see the schools, see the students in their school environment. Actually, the college was not even back yet, so just our students are back so that they can get tours. They were being toured by other students so they could get acclimated, but it was great to see our students back, and they were all excited to be back. I asked many of them, and they all said yes, that they were excited to be back. Also, this is something that is posted on our website, but a way that our parents can actually make sure that they know where their bus stops are, and so we just want to make sure that this is out in the public. This is also in Symbi, but they can find this on our website as well. Open houses, they're going to be here before you know it. Actually, next Thursday is the first day for teachers to return, Thursday, and then that's Thursday, Friday, which are days that they have in their classrooms to get their classrooms ready, and then on Monday is kind of the official, all, everybody back on Monday, all of our employees, and then that is the week that we start our open houses. So just to make sure, high schools are August 22. That is the night of our board meeting. So Area Supes will be out in schools that night. We won't get to, we usually try to get out to all, but middle and elementary, all staff will be out at those open houses. So those are the dates. And then on Friday morning, August 25, that is the final day before kids return on Monday, before our students return, we are having our very large, some folks call it their back-to-school convocation, some districts, but it's all employees. And I know we haven't done this in a while, but it's all of our 7,000 employees to celebrate them, to kick off the school year. We have a great lineup of Teacher of the Year and students and others who will be, you know, saying some words of inspiration that morning. So this is in everyone's calendar, and we're getting the district-wide message out. Principals have gotten it, but this is going to be a big deal. We actually also invited all of our parent advisory to come out and be part of that. We're going to have a parade to start the day of a lot of dignitaries and others that will be there as well. So we're excited about this welcome, this time of coming back. It's our 60th year, and so we are calling it Ready Set 60, since we're at Bowman Gray, which is, I guess, it's a stadium but a racetrack, a racetrack. So we're really excited about kicking off the new school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So our next order of business is discussion items. First is the market share report presented by Andrew Craft, our Chief Accountability Officer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent McManus, members of the board. This is good news that I get to share with you. I usually do this once a year. This is not an action item. This is simply for your information. We look at the percentage of students in Forsyth County that choose to attend public schools, and then we ask the question, for those students that don't attend public schools in Forsyth County, where do they go? We also ask that question through the lens of, how do we compare to other large urban districts? So the reason I say it's good news is because we continue to enjoy the largest market share of any large urban district in the state of North Carolina. You see here that about 80% of the school-aged children in Forsyth County attend public schools. That's good news, and you can see how that looks in other school systems, and I've compared it here to other large school systems across the state, but also compared it to the state of North Carolina as a whole. Of course, I think what probably sticks out to you, sticks out to me there, is Charlotte Meck, right, who had a large recovery in their market share. That's of interest, and the next slides will help to explain kind of how that happened. But I would also point out that we all wondered, when we saw this drop during COVID, would we recover? And the answer has been yes, right? So although we, like other districts across the state, experienced a loss in our market share during COVID, we're starting to see those students come back to the public schools. That's a good sign. And again, I think we can take a lot of pride in this, the fact that parents entrust us with their children, the vast majority of them in this county do. So then we ask that question, right? So if they don't go to public schools in Forsyth County, where do they go? And this shows you that in Forsyth County, about 5% of students that choose not to attend public schools instead attend charter schools. This also highlights what I pointed out in the last slide, and that is that large change that they experienced down in Charlotte. Well, that change is mainly related to a change in their charter school enrollment. Another option the parents have is homeschool, and again, we point out that dip that happened during COVID, right? You see this large increase, and now we're recovering again. When I say recovering, that means more of those students are coming back to the public schools, fewer of them attending homeschool. But nonetheless, if you look at it on a more longitudinal basis, you'd say there has been an increase, a steady increase over time, in the number of families who are choosing to homeschool rather than have their students attend public schools. So this has been a significant change. I say significant. You see it's gone from about 4.5% up to 7.8%. So that has been a major change for homeschooling in Forsyth County. And the last option that we look at is private schools, right? So charter, homeschools, private schools. Private schools have held steady over time, and so you see that in 2013, about 7.5% of the students of Forsyth County attended private schools, and today it's 7.7. So it's really remained about the same. And it's interesting, too, if you compare us to other large urban districts, that our private school enrollment is lower, particularly you see lower than Charlotte, lower than Wake, lower than Durham as well. So this is the last slide I have for you. It just shows a longer longitudinal look at our market share. So back in 2007, we had 85% of the students here in Forsyth County attending public schools. Today, we have about 80%. That's a drop of about five percentage points. But you compare that to some of the drops that other districts have seen across the state, they've experienced a much larger drop, right? And again, I still think that we're feeling a little bit of that COVID change, right? So had I reported 2019, right, which would have been incompletive, of course, but I don't think that change is as severe. So it's my impression that over time, we may see our market share rise as a result of us coming out of the global pandemic. That's all I have for you. I think you find that interesting, and again, we're grateful to the parents who entrust us with their children, the most valuable asset. Do you all have any questions about that?
I just want to make a comment. I want to thank you for this information, Andy. I also want to say, as a public school board of education, that it's great to see that most of our parents are choosing public education and not charter and not private schools. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I agree. Thank you.
Andy, why do you think we've done so well in comparison to other districts?
You know, it's a good question.
What are those ingredients?
That's a great question, right? I would probably be speculating if I tried to answer it directly. You know, the way that researchers in our department would go about doing that is surveys and things like that. I don't have, I haven't done those surveys, so I don't want to speculate. It's a good question.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much. Next, Lauren Richards, our Chief Operations Officer, will discuss the activity bus purchase.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, members of the board, and Superintendent McManus. So back in late spring, around May, I presented to the board that we were exploring a purchase of activity buses, and instead of bringing you an activity bus purchase in the month of June, we were reviewing the fleet for making repairs to engines, doing engine replacements and other things before just going out and purchasing buses. And so through this review, we have discovered a number of engines that we can replace to preserve some of the bus bodies that we have, rather than purchasing 62 and 72 passenger vehicles. We've also been working with our athletics team about the various teams that we have out there. We also have OCS and some other smaller programs that utilize our activity buses. And what we discovered was that we really needed some additional smaller buses in our fleet. We have a few that are out there, positioned at Carter and a couple of other schools, but we do not have very many. And so we have been looking at 14 and 18 passenger school buses, and also buses that have lift capability to support our EC students and other students throughout the district. And so over the summer, as we started reviewing this information and talking with state contractors, we learned that there were three 14-passenger buses available, two from White's International and one from Thomas, Carolina Thomas, excuse me, that were available, and that the 14-passenger buses were not going to be made again until 2025 due to the availability of the chassis to be able to prepare that bus. The benefit of the 14-passenger bus is that this does not require a CDL for operation. And so when we think about having less TAs, ECTAs, athletic coaches, and other people throughout our district having CDLs today, we felt like this was an advantage so that our smaller athletic teams and other academic programs could utilize these buses without having to hire or seek out a driver with a CDL. And so in the month of July, while board was on recess, we proceeded with procuring those three buses. They had a very short life to them because they were offered to five or six different school districts on a first-come, first-served basis. Through that process, we were able to actually secure only two of them from White's International. The bus for Carolina Thomas was procured by another district, and we did process that PO and are coming to you this evening to ask for your blessing in that purchase. Any questions about those buses? Before we go to questions, sorry. We're going to be coming back to you on the 22nd for an 18-passenger lift bus as well and some engine replacements.
Okay, great. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, Alexandra Hoskins, our interim Chief Human Resource Officer, will give us a 2023-24 staffing update.
So good evening, Chair Kaplan, Board of Education, and Superintendent McManus. It is a delight to be in front of you this evening to be able to share some good news about where we are with staffing for the 23-24 school year. So we're going to jump right in and start talking numbers. When I accepted the role as interim Chief Human Resource Officer, the superintendent's first words out of her mouth were, "We're going to have zero vacancies on August 17." So we've been working very hard to try to hit that target, and so tonight's presentation is really about making sure that you have information about where we are. So here is where we are as of this afternoon. You can see that we are sitting on approximately 215 vacancies for our school-based personnel, which is 152 people better than where we were at this time last year. So that's about a 41% improvement over where we were for hiring for the 22-23 school year. We have approximately 155 classroom teacher vacancies for certified non-classroom and just under 56 classified staff vacancies currently. And so we are very encouraged by these numbers and are very hopeful that we have some mechanisms in place to be able to ensure that those numbers continue to fall. They have fallen every week so far. We actually have a chart up in the lobby of the central office building where we are making sure that everybody in central office is aware of where we are with the vacancies. So we're being very transparent and upfront about the fact that vacancies are moving in a good trajectory. Some of the things that we've done to help address these issues include things like we have implemented a couple of changes to the hiring process. For example, we have allowed schools to upload the applicant agreement directly into the online tracking system, which reduces the amount of paperwork that they have to submit. And we've also looked at- And we've also looked at the references. And we are now requiring one supervisor reference as well as one additional reference instead of two supervisor references, so that we are trying to make sure that we get good information about candidates without making the process cumbersome. In operations, we have three main categories where we are still seeing vacancies in larger numbers. We are down to 58 bus driver vacancies, which is one more than what we had last year at this time. Custodians are sitting at about 11 for those positions. But it's the kitchen assistants where the real good story is. We are down to 30 vacancies, and last year at this time, we had 133. So, we have 133 more kitchen assistants secured than what we had last year. And I did ask Lauren for some information about kitchen assistants, because I wanted context. So the district employs approximately 450 kitchen assistants total. It's an average of about five to seven per school. So getting down to 30 vacancies means that we're in pretty decent shape around the kitchen assistant position. Our recruitment and retention team has been out beating the concrete to make sure that we can knock down just about every opportunity that we can to attract the best quality candidates to come work for Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools. Early in July, we had an Alternative Pathways webinar. As you know, we're all in a teacher shortage, and so we need to look at those creative ways in order to allow people to become fully licensed in education. So we offered a webinar. We had 100 attendees and 22 new teachers hired as a result of that event. So that was a good investment of our time. In the middle of July, we had the Operations Career Fair at Reynolds Gym, and we had 160 people attend that particular career fair with 102 applicants that have been reviewed for consideration since that time. And I went to visit on that day, and the whole place was abuzz. And that's where we got a lot of those kitchen assistants. There were folks sitting in the bleachers waiting to be interviewed and actually investing their time and opportunity to be able to be heard on that day. One of our more creative opportunities are the coffee chats. Last week, we had coffee with the principal. And we had three of our principals, an elementary, middle, and high school principal, who are experiencing higher numbers of vacancies, be able to meet with nine interview, they had nine interviews on that day, and there have been five recommendations for hire from that event. So that was also a pretty good return for a 90-minute event. Yesterday, we had the Coffee with Child Nutrition, and we had eight interviews. And then tomorrow is the Coffee with a Bus Driver. And we have up to 10 interviews scheduled for that. So that's, we're pleased with those numbers and that opportunity to create on-the-scene interviews. Some additional strategies include the Top Weekly Candidates Report that is updated daily and shared with principals. And then principals have the opportunity to look at those highly qualified candidates and indicate their interest. The recruitment and retention team is having one-on-one meetings with principals with higher vacancies so that they can understand the needs of what those schools have and make sure that they are providing the best support and strategies and suggestions for creative solutions. We have 63 schools right now that have three or fewer vacancies. And you can see that the breakdown of the numbers there. So with 18 schools that are fully staffed, we're getting there. So we're at about 20%, almost 25% of our schools that are sitting fully staffed now. But at 63, that's about 75% that have three or fewer vacancies. We do have several bonus compensation opportunities for our schools so that we are providing hopefully some financialist incentive to work in our strategic and intensive support schools. We are offering the Transformation School Bonus, which is for all employees in those strategic and intensive or Tier 2 and Tier 3 schools. There is a performance-based recruitment bonus for teachers who have, or school administrators who have demonstrated EVOS and also work in those strategic or intensive support schools. And then through our Federal Teacher and School Leader Grant, we have two additional bonuses that are based on the previous school year's performance. We have some optional staffing solutions that hopefully offer some creative opportunity to expand teacher impact. I promise I'm not going to stand here and read this whole slide to you. But just know that we are looking at opportunities for how teachers who are effective in the classroom can expand their impact within their schools so that we can reduce those vacancies even further, but ensure that our students have high-quality education and instruction each and every day. We continue to partner with EPI for international teacher candidates. We have 28 new teachers coming from a number of different foreign countries who have the credentials in order to teach in North Carolina. And that does include 18 J-1 exchange visas, those 10 H-1B visas, and then five green card candidates who will be having permanent status here in the United States. So we are pleased with our opportunity to tap into some folks who may not have been born in this country but who can provide that high-quality education for our students. We have lots of upcoming recruitment efforts. So you can see on your screen there, the opportunities that are coming up in this fall season where the recruitment process is never-ending. The recruitment and retention team does not rest on their laurels once the school year gets started. They continue to get out there and see what additional candidates are available to fill current vacancies, as well as prepare for the next school year. Want to make sure that everybody knows how to follow the recruitment and retention team on social media, so that we are making sure that the public is aware of how to keep up to date with what the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools is doing in order to have the best educators in front of our students each and every day. Any questions for me? Yes, sir?
Yes.
First of all, congratulations. This is a large task to take place. And where we are, we're concerning other teacher shortage across our country. So thank you, and your department, and all those who are involved. Two quick questions. We also know during this time of year, there are many teachers who will, quote, "leave us" because there's something else better, quote, "in another county." Do we have any idea what those numbers may look like? Or are we experiencing that drift at this point?
So I do not have that information handy. However, Superintendent McManus has asked me to come back at the next meeting to provide an additional staffing update. So I will make sure that we look at where our teachers gone, because we do ask them to do an exit survey. So we can look at that exit survey data and find out what they're saying about where they're going.
Because unfortunately, they hold on to that last card, to the very last minute, and say, "I'm going to Wake County, I'm going to Giffer County, and then I had a position there full, and now it's August 25th, now I'm vacant." So, concerned about that data. But also, this is not directly to you, but a concern I have with bus drivers, to make sure we have a Plan B in place to cover all routes on the first day of school, because that's our high mark. So we've got to get it right on the first day of school, morning and afternoon departures.
So I know that Lauren Richards and Senior Executive Director Tisha Davidson are meeting with the superintendent tomorrow to share with her what the current plan is and what the backup plan will be.
That is correct. And I will also say, you know, Saturday, when we did have our HR team out at a community event, and so, and actually, Tisha and our transportation, some of our transportation folks at a community event, we walked up, there are applicants. But as you all heard in our workshop with the board back in the spring, that is, it is a process, it's probably one of the most rigorous processes I've ever seen, from "I want to be a bus driver" to getting to the finish line. I mean, there are so many layers to getting to that qualification, which I know it's important because we're driving our precious students, but it is a process. And so those 58, you know, we're up to 58 vacancies. And so a realization, you know, that I had on Saturday when I stopped by to see our team was, we're pretty much going to either, either we get people with CDLs that want to transfer here, or we start here with 58 vacancies. Because there's someone new that applies today will not be driving on Monday, I mean, on that first day of school. So we will have our backup plan ready. But at the end of the day, with 58 drivers, there probably will be, they're going to be late, they're going to be late buses on that day. And I think the important part of this is that we communicate. Now, that's not good enough. We still got, we have two weeks left. And so I will be, we have some ideas that I just talked to Lauren about yesterday around, could we, you know, again, it's, all of our districts are basically like pulling from each other. And I know that's not the right thing to do, but we're going to ask our drivers, you know, if they bring a friend that has a CDL, they don't have to be from another district, they could be a spouse that drove 10 years ago, they could be a community person who lives down the street. I would, we're talking about bonus structures for Bring a Friend, something where they and the new person get some type of signing bonus. Because again, 58 vacancies on day one, with all the plans in place, there's going to be lateness. And that is not okay for our kids standing on the road, that's not okay. Now, the important part is, there will be clear communications with our families about that. But I just, I need to paint that picture, because it wasn't until, you know, I'm thinking, you know, we have all these candidates, we had 45 that started the process. They're not going to be processed with all their CDL, their training, their license by that first day. And so, and honestly, and I'll love Lauren to come back to y'all, but you all saw in that workshop, we've had so many people apply to be drivers, and I've talked to the other superintendents in the other districts, from start to finish, you reduce it because of the process from maybe, you know, 50 people that are interested to you get down to the finish line and seven cross it. That is a problem. And so we've got to figure out, like, how to avoid that. Part of the issue, and this is with classified in general, are the salaries. You know, there are other districts that are starting salary for a driver is $17, $18. I'm very excited. In September, we will be bringing you our classified proposal. We didn't bring it, we're not bringing it piecemeal. Like, let's do this group now, let's do this group then. We want to bring the entire market study and what we want to do with classified salary increases to the last meeting in September. That is our goal. Because again, the county commissioners put a million. We had saved three, oh, I can't remember what it was. I feel like we, 4.7. So we ended up, we have about $4 million right now to work with on those classified salaries. And that's drivers and mechanics, by the way, because we need the folks that are fixing the buses and making sure they're running. But at the end of the day, we want to bring that entire proposal to significantly impact our classified salaries. And so that's coming. I don't know if you all are aware, we had a market study done about five years ago, five years ago, Tommy? And it has to be updated. It is already so outdated with the $15 increase that the state, that the state has all districts go to for all classified employees. So we're going to bring that back with recommendations to start addressing this. Because again, if you can cross the line and make 18, that is not, you know, money is important to folks, and working conditions are as well. But finances, you know, we've got to pay our folks. So I just wanted to say all that because on the classified part of that, we are going to be bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Question, yes. So, in June, we graduated a little over 4,000 high school seniors, now high school graduates. And we know some of them are, you know, employed or enrolled in higher education or have joined the military, but they're still a lot without a plan. What are we doing to reach our recent graduates who don't have a plan right now to fill these classified positions?
No, I think that's a great question. And I think that our recruitment and retention team are, they are out there actually investing their time to be able to talk to recent graduates. I know that they actually even go through, drive through windows and give flyers about opportunities to work for the district. So they are really trying to find those young folks who may need a path and who may need an opportunity to have a career with an organization that would be able to develop their skill set. But I will certainly ask them for some specific strategies to bring back to you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for all your hard work. You're really making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Dr. Frederica Stokes, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, will update us on the Restore, Reset, and Restart Program, which is the R3 program.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent McManus. We're here to share an update on Restore, Reset, Restart Program R3. So this program is designed to serve our middle and high school students who have received a Level 3 to 5 consequence resulting in them receiving an out-of-school suspension. These students could have been suspended for up to 10 days. This program will allow students to be in a safe environment. It'll help parents out and give parents an option for students to be able to attend this program while they have been out-of-school suspended. And we'll also continue to work with them on their academic supports. The program referral process will start at the school level. It'll start with a student being assigned an out-of-school suspension by a school administrator. From there, that school administrator will contact program staff at R3 to determine if there's space available there. If there is space available, then they will, that administrator will reach out to the parent, share with the parent that this is an option for their student. Their student may have received a three-day or a five-day suspension, and you have the option to have your student go to the R3 program instead of being home alone or being home unaccompanied. If space is available, the school administrator will then contact, talk with the parent. They will complete the referral form. And then the school administrator will submit the referral form back to the R3 office in addition to seeking their class assignments from their teachers. From there, the R3 staff, once they receive the referral form, they will contact the parent. When they talk with the parent, they will share information regarding orientation. And at that time, they'll be able to determine what type of orientation that parent needs. It may be a virtual option if the parent cannot get to the actual site, or if they have someone else bringing their child. It could also be a phone orientation. The student and parent will attend the orientation the following day, if that is possible. And during that time, they're going to share with them regarding the program, the goals, the structure of the day, that lunch will be provided. They will give them detailed information on their child's stay. As the student completes their suspension, they will then transition back to their homeschool, their base school. When they attend the base school, they go back, there will be a transition meeting where R3 staff will transition that student back to their homeschool. They'll talk with them about their assignments that they completed, any goals that they may have set while they were in the program. And then they will also follow up and touch base with their staff throughout the year. Program staff will include a middle and high school teacher, because this program is designed for students 6 through 12, an EC teacher, an EC teacher assistant, behavior specialist, and then we'll have a school social worker. During that orientation, that's a time where the school social worker will actually talk with the family to see if there are any specific needs, any resources that they may need. And they will provide those resources or make community referrals. Staffing will receive training. Our SEL department will train them within restorative practices, nonviolent crisis intervention training. Our behavior support staff will train on those particular areas. They will attend the trauma-resilient training. And then they will attend all of the Code of Character Conduct and Support training. The next steps for this program is an anticipated program start date of September 18th. It's anticipated because we have to hire staff. We have to be able to hire staff first. And so we're hoping that we can get it started September 8th. It'll be at the Fulton Y. The time will be from 7:25 to 2:05 PM. They will receive their breakfast and their lunch. Transportation will not be provided for the first quarter. We just talked about the bus driver shortage. And so Lauren and her team has been working with a team from Durham Public Schools who do provide transportation in their Short Term Suspension Center program to talk with them about how do they transport, what does that look like with shortages? So the staff will continue to work to devise a plan for transportation after first quarter and its contingent upon hiring transportation staff. What questions do you have regarding the R3 program?
Okay. Board member, round gather.
And I've been thinking about this for a while, especially after, you know, we talked about this.
talked about this. One of the concerns I have is the location, it's not centrally located, that's a major issue for me and we're not going to provide any transportation. And so, being introspective about this, I was wondering, why could we not temporarily put the R, well, not even temporarily, but put the R3 program with Main Street at St. Peters that has a threshold of 100 students and we will be well below that with the Main Street population and with how many students, we're saying only 50 for R3 and so that would be below the threshold of 100. It would be more centrally located. We do provide transportation, I think, for Main Street, do we not?
We do.
Okay. So, that would take care of transportation and then when Main Street transitions back to its original facility, R3 will go there too. And that way, we won't have to, because you know, one of my big concerns is trying to ha- hire additional staff when we have not fully staffed our schools. This way, we don't have to hire additional staff, they can use the staff that we have at Main Street. With the number of students they have, adding additional 50 students is not going to overburden them. And if I'm speaking out of turn, I'm so sorry for those teachers or staff who work there, but I think when you're saying less than 100 kids, that staff, we're talking about, um, if I'm not mistaken, we're talking about the, uh, behavior specialist, social worker. Everywhere else, social workers deal with way more than 100 students. So, we're talking about less than 100 students and I don't think we have to hire any additional staff.
So, we're talking about short-term suspended students, so they, they're going to be in and out, so it's not just 50 all year, uh, it is 50 different ones that they can have at one time on that particular day. And so, we're looking at students that will be coming in for three days maybe and leaving back out. We're looking at, um, kids that are going to be coming for five days and leaving back out, so it's going to be 50 students coming in and out, serving their suspension days. Um, and so, um, I think that that could be potentially, um, disruptive to Main Street staff, um, because they're used to working with a certain population throughout the entire, um, year or they are assigned to them for at least 45 days. And so, we will be bringing an additional set of kids in, they have only been short-term suspended, they have not been long-term suspended. We will bring a short-term suspended kid in to be with Main Street students who have been extent, um, suspended for a duration of 45 days. And so, that would be my concern, um, regarding staffing and regarding supporting, um, those particular, um, students because there is an in and out.
Board Member Kane?
I love your idea, Trevonia, um, because my idea is why don't we just table this right now, all together, um, and, um, get Main Street back, um, from Philo Hill and actually use Main Street, um, for what it is, it could be intended to be used for. It has room, it has capacity, um, because my questions are the following. One, it is a, um, not a central location, I live about five minutes from the Fulton Y and if I think about the time of day that we would be asking parents to bring their students, um, to the Fulton Y, from anywhere, um, over on this side of town to anywhere in the Kernersville area, Parkland area, um, that side of town, you're looking at a good 30 plus minute drive. So, I, I question, is that truly equitable? Um, two, um, if I think about just an average of students, it, it's only going to hold 50 students in three classrooms, um, we made an, a, a concession about safety with a sixth grader and a 12th grader being together in a building that houses 800 students, but now we're going to be okay with a sixth grader and a 12th grader being together in the same room within three classrooms. Um, so I, I'd like to finish. And then, um, I think that we also have to consider that, um, if we have a three to five day suspension, if we have, um, the number of schools, if an average of two students in each of the schools were suspended, no matter the number of days, we still can't accommodate the minimum number of students at one time. And again, is that equitable? Because if teach, principal or administrator A is busy and can't get his paperwork in in a timely ma- manner and principal B can, they, they could miss that opportunity. I just feel like this hasn't been thought through enough, um, and again, we don't have all of our schools staffed and we're looking to staff an off-site location, um, and trying to push something through, um, when we don't even have our schools fully staffed. I don't think that this is a terrible idea, I just think we're rushing it and I think we could table it and come back and think about it when we have, um, a little more opportunity.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you. Um, Dr. Stokes, could you help me, uh, what is the, the hopeful, because I think this will help me put some things into context. So, what's the sort of longer term, maybe three to five years down the line, our hope to, in terms of what R3 will transform into?
So, the long-term plan, um, this is the pilot year, this is a pilot program. Um, we had a team of individuals, um, Dr. McMillan, um, Dr. Williams that attended, um, various sites across the state. Um, we looked at Charlotte Mc, um, starting off small, they have seven sites and now they're expanding till 10. So, this is our first year and so we wanted to start small, start this year and then looking at funding, looking at the utilization of the program and then expanding. Uh, we looked, um, Charlotte uses, um, parks and rec, um, programs and that's what we would like to look at, parks and rec programs, otherwise, the Y's, um, provided, um, Effie and I the opportunity to view all of their Y's sites. Um, they could have hosted us at other different locations. Um, the current, um, Fulton Y had the largest space, uh, with the three spaces where we would have middle school students separated from our high school students and so that's why we decided to go. So, the three to five year plan would be with funding, um, to be able to expand. Uh, we looked at programs also, um, in Orange County, um, that they have one program for their entire district, um, for Orange County and then, um, also people from Chapel Hill, um, come to, to that program. That program, um, is funded through grants, um, and the school system, um, has partnered with that particular organization. So, we're looking at grant opportunities, um, down the road and we're looking at the expansion so that we'll have different sites across Winston-Salem, um, and across Forsyth County really, um, such as what Charlotte has done, started off, um, with a small number and they didn't start off with seven, but they have seven now and they're expanding so that there are more locations for families to be able to bring the students to, um, because again, they have bus transportation issues. The only, um, district that we found, which is Durham, and they only have one location and in Durham, that's the only location that actually provides transportation, bus transportation for their students. They served about 650 students that they shared with us last year, um, Charlotte Mc served 1,220 students, um, who would have been suspended over 6,000 days, missing instructional time. Um, and so, um, I work with the code, um, our goal is to decrease the amount of lost instructional time and having these additional supports for students, because students are, um, going to get suspended for certain violations, um, and to be able to vi- provide a safe environment, um, and to provide parents with options, um, that's our goal. And so, three to five year plan, this is the first year, starting small and then expanding depending upon money and utilization of the program.
So, originally, I would say I had a, a few different concerns. I would say the first is about the location and proximity to our other schools and the issues around transportation because I believe that there's a correlation between, and I think we've talked about this multiple times, there's a correlation between the socioeconomic status of students and disciplinary action and, uh, it may be likely, more likely than not, that a student who is suspended for the days that we're talking about may not have the ability to be able to have a parent or guardian take them to the R3, um, especially if they, their home school is across town, on the other side of town. I think additionally, uh, I was concerned sort of about kind of what was, what learning was going to be taking place and so if, if I'm suspended for five days and I'm going to be at a site for five days, I, I don't necess- and, and while somebody is responsible for, for also teaching somebody who may be there for 10, like the, the kind of balance of that or trying to figure out how that all works is a little, kind of interesting to me, but I will say, that, that point has kind of worked itself out because to me, it's better than them being at home. Anything is be- I mean, anything is better than them be sitting at home, not doing anything. Um, was, was there any, was there ever any conversation about since Fulton is in the, this area of town, that as a, making it sort of a true pilot and sort of making it available to the schools that are kind of in close proximity to it for the sake of the pilot and then perhaps as we expand, we add locations that are in other proximities? Because I, I think that the usage and the participation is probably going to trend where the schools that are in close proximity anyway are going to utilize it, so maybe you all are like, well, we, that's probably going to be the case, but we just want to be all-inclusive anyway, is?
Yeah, we did want to be all-inclusive, um, we've, you know, shared some information with principals about it and they were excited, I mean, just to know that there's another site, that the kids aren't going to be home alone, that they're going to get a meal. And so, there was, you know, excitement with the option of, um, having somewhere for students to go. Is it ideal? Can we serve every single student? Um, no. Um, do we need the transportation? Yes, but as you heard, 59, 58, um, we're short staff, um, and so, um, we, you know, offer nothing to our students or we do give them an opportunity to be in an environment with teachers, with staff, with social workers and connecting them with more resources. We know oftentimes when students are acting out and there are behavior concerns, that they do need additional supports and so this social worker being there to connect families with resources and supports, it's, it's another option. Um, if someone else, um, that, um, is not in that particular, could be heated situation at the time, if someone else that can look at that kid from a different angle, can help, um, determine if they need a mentor, what supports are needed and they can connect them with those particular resources. And so, um, that, that is like really our goal, to be able to provide options for parents because right now, the option is for them to be a home alone or for them to try to find someone, a grandparent or sibling to watch them. Um, and we know that oftentimes, students who are suspended, suspending a student for five, seven days, sometimes that's not a bad thing for students. Sometimes they stay home and play the Nintendo or Playstation all day, um, sometimes, um, they, um, get into other mischief within the community. Um, and so, um, this would be a safe environment, um, for some of our students. No, it's not ideal, we can't serve everyone at this initial time. And Dr. McMillan wants to say something, she's on the team, um, that researched work.
I'll just add for location, um, so a conversation started with the Y because they wanted to offer space and they actually wanted to start a program very similar, um, to support students. So, when we went out and looked at multiple sites with Kim McClure, um, I want to say it was Winston Lakes was getting ready to do construction there, like in a fundraising campaign, um, all the other sites, even though they may have been more centrally located, also share space with the community. And the Fulton site, one of the reasons why we landed on that site, um, was because nobody else is in the building. They're giving us the entire space to use, so we're not having to try to figure out and navigate safety for our students, interacting with the public in a building that's not one of our school buildings that have the reinforcement. So, that was another reason for the Fulton, Fulton Y, it may not be the best location, but it was the most ideal based on the options that we had as we were out looking at different locations across the county.
Board Member Miller?
Yes, I have a couple of points. More than the location, we just spent a million dollars to send our children over to St. Peters because we didn't want to mix middle school and high school. We're doing the same thing here and it's a smaller space. It's almost the same amount of students, but it's a much, much smaller space. So, I'd like to know your plans for how we're going to keep our students separate, that's a major concern. The second point is, if I'm not mistaken, there's a 700,000 price tag on this and do we have to outfit the building as we're doing at St. Peters? Do we have to come in with security? Do we have to come in with internet?
No. Um, our technology department, um, Kevin's team, um, has been a part, they've gone to the Y, they've already looked at it, Lauren's team has been there, there is no, um, you know, additional fees, there's no, they already had internet, we've tested that to make sure that that's working. All of that is a part of, um, you utilizing the facility.
And so, what is the plan for keeping our middle and, and high schools separate?
So, I think that the staff, we have a, a, a large staff of the program, we have middle high, we have EC teachers, we have a behavior specialist, we have a social worker, we have, um, also a program director, um, for the program and so, um, it would be like in any other schools to make sure that the kids are separate. We have a, a location for middle school students, we have a location for high school students and we have staff that is going to be monitoring the program, um, throughout the day and supporting the program. I think, um, the middle and high school situation, um, for Main Street was a, a little bit different. Um, we were talking about students who had been long-term suspended for an extended period of time versus students who had, uh, was in regular attendance. I think that was, um, the situation with, um, the Main Street situation, Main Street facility.
Could I ask a question, just a clarifying question? This is not for Dr. Stokes, just for the point, because I hear that from a couple board members as kind of point of contention. So, what was the con- the actual concern that people had, that what was the root of the concern with not having both groups of children in the same space with Main Street and Philo? Was it the age of the children or was it the fact that they were Main Street, they were assigned to Main Street long-term?
Uh, for me, it was both. I didn't, I didn't think it's appropriate to have an 11-year-old around an 18-year-old who is, who might be navigating the court system right now for criminal charges. I mean, that's, that's a problem and, and, you know, I, I wasn't crazy about spending that much money, but after, honestly, it was Board Member Watts's argument convinced me because he's right. When kids want to find a way, they will find a way. And I kind of felt like our board was put on notice a little bit that, not if this happens, but when it happens, we were warned it could happen and we chose to ignore it. So, that's what, that's what factor, that was a major factor for me with the St. Peters thing is, um, that's, that's a huge age discrepancy between an 11-year-old and an 18-year-old.
Board Member Kane?
Um, you, you stated it like the staff has already been hired?
No.
Okay, because you said the staff will, like it was already hired, so I wanted to confirm that we're not hiring for this or we've not hired it.
We have not hired anyone for this.
And then also, I wanted to confirm again, that there's only three classrooms. The other space at the Y is our basketball courts and exercise rooms, but the three classrooms, if it is a full capacity, there is, I'm trying to figure out how we would separate this 11-year-old and an 18-year-old because that is at full capacity, 50 students if you have, let's just say, an influx of middle school and, and high, I mean, what is the plan?
So, the, the plan, I, like I said, we have three, I mean, three different spaces, those spaces are large, um, large spaces that we've been given, um, we've been provided and so, um, there's, like, middle school students will be separated from our high school students. Um, that, that's not a problem, it's three different classroom spaces that they can be in.
So, again, Board, we just didn't want 50 students in a building that houses 800 students because of age, but yet-
And other factors than age, right.
Let's think about, I mean, if these children have been suspended, they didn't get, most of them did not get suspended for just walking into school for nothing. I mean- I mean, I'm just saying, I, I'm just making a point. I did not vote to separate the kids. But I will say that we did not, if you want to make that an issue, these kids, if we're suspending students, they're getting suspended for a reason. They're not well behaved at that moment. So their behavior caused them to need to be restored, reset and whatever the third one is.
Restart.
Restarted.
So I have just a point of, point of information and this might be a question for Deion. So I, I noticed that this item is on for discussion but not action. My belief is that because of the usage of the, the funds that are being used for the project. That this item is being brought forth because we've asked for it to be brought forth. But in, it is not a requirement, it was not required to be brought before the board. Is that correct?
Yes. I mean, that's my opinion. Discipline is generally within the realm of the superintendent. And so this is a program that the superintendent is bringing forth for the board, obviously for the board's input and, and feedback.
Right.
But this was also a part of the budgeted expenditures as well.
And so the superintendent has already sort of, cause it is a programmatic function. The superintendent has the ability to pilot the program with or without our approval.
Yes.
So and I, and I asked, the reason why I asked for that is because I think what I have to balance, I guess, in just my feedback is the fact that in this particular instance, if the money's already been budgeted and the superintendent and her staff feel as though this is something that needs to be piloted. I don't know if I in good conscience can sort of start, kind of stand in the way of that. However, the issue of the precedent is really what weighs on me in the fact that I'm trying to understand what the difference is between the decision that was made last week and this decision in terms of the children. If somebody came to me and they said, what's the difference between the decision that you made relative to not separate, relative to separating the middle school children at Philo and Main Street? I would be able to say that Main, students who attend Main Street have been suspended long-term and have been assigned to Main Street for an extended period. The students in, in R3 are suspended from what, what's the period of time?
It could be one to ten days.
Okay. It's for a shorter period of time. So it is a different type of program, which I think in my head. But, but I think that that's kind of splitting hairs a little bit.
You also had the four hundred kids at Philo with possibly no discipline issues. Being put with kids who've had, who are older and who've had extreme discipline issues. To me, that was a big part of it. And, and board member Brown Gaither made that, brought that point home very clearly with, would we put this program at another school where kids are perceived as not having discipline issues? And, and it's a resounding no, we would not. So why would we mix Philo kids with the Main Street kids? So I think, I think we're talking about totally different populations, but the age difference definitely concerns me when you look at that eleven to eighteen-year-old spread.
Board member, I would also like to add to that discussion that for me as well as dealing with the volume, the number of students we're talking about at Main Street and at Philo. When we look at this program, we're talking about a small number of students that can be very easily managed in quote separate sites or separate, not separate sites, separate classrooms per se. When, that's, that's also a concern I had that. And you're also talking about students who are not long-term placed. We're talking a fluid student body. Three to five here, three to five there. So it's not a set like a year-long Philo Hill student or, or year-long potential Main Street students. I think, I see a difference in, in the types of programs and the volume of the students as well. I'm still concerned about the safety, but when you talk about just much smaller number of fifty students to manage versus four hundred Philo Hill students, fifty-eight, possibly a hundred Main Street students.
Board member Kane?
Can you clarify? Did you said three to five or three to ten-day suspensions?
I said one to ten days. So one to ten days.
And remember board too, that this is an opportunity and parents know that. So parents that say, yes, I want my child to go to this R3, which is an alternative to out-of-school suspension type program. There, it's an opportunity. And so a child that is there for multiple days, if they are not successful in that opportunity on day one, there, they don't have to come back. I'm just going to say it. It is, it is an opportunity to not have an out-of-school suspension. And, and just so you know, there are, there are kids, great kids that follow rules and get suspended sometimes for really bad decisions. These are kids that are in high school and middle school. And so these are really good kids. And they need a chance to instead of being home, they can, their parent says, I want them to get, have this opportunity. They go there. And again, transportation is not, we've, we've said it, our goal is to actually provide transportation. And so we just are not going to start that in the first month. So we will work our way toward what that looks like. But every district we've talked to that started this started small and expanded. Most started with no transportation. Many have, still have no transportation. That is not what we want to do. We want to provide transportation so that everyone can, can benefit from this. But it is, it is a pilot. And as far as keeping the kids separate, that is not hard to do. It is not hard to do with fifty kids that come from one to ten days and they, they, they check in, they go to their room. They're either in the middle school room or they're in the high school room. And it is, it is a small enough number with enough adults that that is a non-issue. It's, they're not there for a school year. Main Street is, has its own number. Main Street is, is a school. Main Street, some of the kids are there all year. There is no comparison to the two, to the two scenarios. There's no comparison.
Ms. Stokes, I have a couple of questions for you. Do we have any data around students involved with discipline referrals? And location by school? I'm trying to figure out like if, if it is concentrated, if there's any rhyme or reason to it? And the Fulton Y location?
Yeah, we can get the data. We do know, I can kind of tell you off the top of my head. You know, schools that have high disciplinary infractions. But we didn't, we did not use that as a sole determination of location. Like Dr. McMillan said, that was, we looked at different sites. We were looking at space and we were looking at how many people are actually going to be in that facility with our students. And so the Fulton provided us with a space that we weren't going to have different individuals coming in and out to the Y throughout the day. And so we were looking at the safety component of it too. Being in a location where it's just really our kids there and not a lot of people coming in and out. And so that was our, that was ultimately the decision that led us to the Y. It wasn't the number of discipline suspensions at nearby schools, but it was the location. And making sure that there were not a lot of people that were coming in from the community in and out. That our students could potentially interact with. So it was safety.
Okay. And then one other question. Have we considered staggering the start time? So that we could provide transportation in terms of like of the fourth bus route?
So when we looked at that timeframe and Lauren, we felt like that that was the timeframe that we would be able to get the most students there starting off with the first tier. Cause we could potentially be picking the students up from home. And so that was the reason why we chose the early time for transportation purposes. Did you want to add anything, Laura?
What is the time?
For transportation. So the seven o'clock, so the early start time was in preparation of being able to transport at a later date.
Yeah. Ms. Stokes is, or Dr. Stokes is correct. So Main Street Academy and the Kingswood School are both on the seven twenty-five bell. They both do all county transportation. And the benefit there in the morning is you, you do have a larger window of time where you can run some very specialized routes because you have a lot less kids on those buses because they could be coming from all over.
Board member Brown Gaither?
And I, I want to make it clear. I do understand that Main Street is a different scenario. I do understand that it has a different code. I understand that. My problem is I don't know how many, how many staff do we have at Main Street? What is, what is our staffing like? What's the numbers at Main Street? How many?
I believe they have staff approximately thirty-two.
Okay. So thirty-two staff. And now we're trying to do an additional one, two, three, four, five. Six staff of this one program. I still say those can be some kind of way by scheduling, less than a hundred. And I realize though, the ones from R3 are going to come in, out, and out. We will never top a hundred in a day.
May I address that part of the concern? I think also when you're looking at students who are coming in and out as a regular classroom teacher. If I have a quote, ten students who I know are with me all day, Monday through Friday for sixty, ninety, hundred and eighty days. And then I'm going to add two or three students who are coming in three to five days or, or one to ten day. Then that's going to disrupt that whole educational flow of what I'm trying to teach that student who's coming in for three to five days or eighth grade social studies versus a year-long student who's in there for all years of social studies. It's going to be really, really hard to juggle that curriculum with the in, with the fluid students coming in and out. And I'm both the eighth grade social studies teacher or I'm the seventh grade language arts teacher. Try to, it's almost like going back to hybrid COVID in-classroom, in-person, trying to juggle all that at the same time. It's going to be very rough on a teacher to do that and in the fluidness of the classrooms.
I taught for nineteen years. And I just wanted to say this. And I know you had a lot more. My point is, and at the R3 program, we only have one middle school teacher and one high school teacher. And my understanding of the R3 program was they were going to be on virtually and the, well, I would not say virtually. They're going to be on with, what is the program called? Their assignments come over with them and the teacher only assists them if they have questions. Am I right?
The teacher will support them throughout. They will have their assignments probably in Canvas.
Right.
Or they will send it with them.
Right.
And they will support them in their, in their work.
So a teacher is not steadily with them, teaching them anything. That's.
But they're.
I agree, but I also disagree because of the classroom situation. You're talking about a teacher trying to manage students who are perhaps, and we're not even sure if they're going to be quote, hopefully they'll be able, so much similar pacing guide. Hopefully we're close to pacing guide. But even if they're close to pacing guide, you're going to still have to give some attention to those two or three students who are there, three to five. And it will take away from the overall instruction of the general classroom. I'm just, I may, I may be wrong, but I think that's, we go back and look at teachers who complained about how they had to have in-person classroom, hybrid classrooms. How much of a struggle. I see the very similar thing being that I'm going to balance a whole lot more by being an R3 teacher in a classroom. Even to a Main Street teacher, I'm going to have to balance my Main Street students and curriculum with these five days. I'll get, I'll get four students in, then they'll leave. Then I'll get four more students or two more students in. Got to get them up and going. Then they leave. And I still got to juggle that with my regular students. I think that is a stressor for any teacher. And as for a Main Street teacher, may have a smaller class load, but still a stressor.
Board member Kane?
I want to circle back to how the students are selected because I feel like I'm getting some mixed messages with something I picked up that you said, something that you've said, Dr. Stokes. So my understanding is it's first come, first served. But then it's, you know, I hear I picked up on, you know, there are those students who make that mistake and they're good students and they deserve another chance. So how are we going to make sure that our principals aren't cherry picking? Who is allowed to go into this program? And it's actually an equitable first come, first served. Because if it is that student that, oh, this is a really good student and they don't need to be sent home. Versus this student got in trouble first and they need, they, they are first come, first served. Whether they've, it's their tenth infraction or their first infraction, it shouldn't matter. What is the accountability for that to ensure that we're truly being equitable in how we are sending our students there?
So, yeah, I can respond to that. So the principal doesn't, and, and my comments about our kids is that all of them deserve to be, to be given supports to get back on track. All of them are capable of getting back on track with supports, every one of them. So what my comments, I meant that they're all great kids and they get, they make mistakes and they end up suspended for them. When they're continuous or when they're egregious enough that it, it takes a three or five day suspension, whatever that is. So what I'm going to say is with that said, it's not a, you get to choose. It's the, the student, you're going to, you're going to administer a, a suspension. You, you have to offer it. You have to call. It is, you have to offer it. So you call the parent. And so with every suspension, parent should be called anyway. You call the parent and you say, do you want your child to go to this? But first you call and you see, cause every school's calling, all of our middle high have access. They're all calling. So if there's room in it, you offer it, they accept it, that child goes. There is no, I think Leah, I'm going to let, I'm going to give it to you this option. I'm not going to give it to Richard. There is not that, that's not the, the protocol. And so there are tight protocols that will be, will be used and expectation set for our building leaders. And it is not, you get to pick and choose who gets the option to go to R3. It's honestly, and, and you can avoid all this by really implementing the restorative practices interventions in the code. So that less kids end up doing, having to be suspended in the first place. Like if we really get to the bottom of, let's really do right by the work that we need to do for kids. Then we will suspend less and then we will need less alternative to out-of-school suspension centers. But we know reality and we've got some suspensions. And so it is, all kids get offered the same opportunity. It is not a, you get to pick and choose as a building leader.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. So Dr. Stokes, last for discussion. If you could give us an update on the student code of character conduct and support.
And I would like to introduce Shannon Dobson. She's our Director of Behavior Support and Interventions. She will be leading our Code of Character Conduct and Support work this school year. So she's here to share information and give you guys an update.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent McManus. Thank you for this opportunity. As Dr. Stokes said, I'm going to be sharing with you our implementation here too of the code. And just thanking you again for your blessings of support. We're going into another year of collaboration with engaging schools. And we're so very excited to share all of the wonderful things that we have planned to continue that work. As you all know, our code really stands on the foundation of providing equitable practices. So that we're supporting our schools and ensuring those proactive and positive interventions in supporting those social and emotional skills that they need. Within that, we really, our foundation is those three pillars. We're working to support our teachers in delivering universal promotion and prevention strategies. So saying that these are strategies that we support universally to be proactive in our classroom management, our classroom instruction, and also our classroom discipline. And along that, we also turn the corner and say restoratively, we have restorative interventions embedded into our code that work with training and implementation through our student services department. And then also with our school leaders. So we're calibrating that discipline response cycle. You know, it starts with from a referral to accountable consequence. And then ensuring that we are implementing those restorative interventions and also closing that, that gap. Making sure that we are communicating with our teachers, with our parents, and even with our students and closing that disciplinary response loop. And all of that, our aim is to really increase those practices that I just talked about. Making sure that our schools or environments that promote that positive culture that students are learning and our staff are supported. That we're responding with restorative supports. So that when there is unwanted behavior, that we're also building skills. That we're not just leaning into an approach that seeks primarily just in some ways to punish, but we're also building up supports. Because we know that's what a lot of our students are needing. And then also making sure the perceptions of our school are, are viewed as a place where I belong. Where I'm enriched and I'm receiving the instruction that I need tailored to my needs. And along those lines, we're also looking at decreasing our disciplinary responses. Looking at, you know, that loss of instructional time. Obviously we want students in our classrooms and that's what our code is seeking to support. And along to supporting those students that have some repeated unwanted skills that are happening. So how are we continuing to build those behaviors through the implementation of our code? So what does year two look like in implementation for us? As we said with those three pillars, we're continuing to support professional development across all of our schools. And the first primarily starts with our universal promotion and prevention. We're going to begin that training in September. And we're going to start with a robust review of all the strategies that are in the promotion and prevention that we did last year. If you remember last year, we covered about eleven strategies for promotion and prevention. And they ranged from the classroom management, classroom. and they ranged from the classroom management, classroom discipline, and a little bit of classroom instruction. So we plan to review that training with all school leaders. Every single school has an established core social, emotional behavior team. And so those team members attend this training, they receive it from our district leaders that are on the training team, and then they turnkey it back into their schools and deliver it to all of the staff members there. From October to Mar, to April, we will be focusing mostly on classroom instructional strategies. Those are still being identified as we speak, and that will primarily focus on, you know, engaging instruction is a large piece of the promotion and prevention work. You know, how are we engaging our learners and tailoring our instruction to support them while still continuing to lift that discipline and that depersonalization and de-escalation along with how we manage our classrooms? And as we turn the corner, still, in our focus on restorative interventions, our plan continues throughout the year with all of our Student Services staff, again with a robust overview of those restorative interventions kicking off in September. And then moving through October, we're going to focus on that re-entry conference so that we are supporting students when they're coming back in, when there has been a suspension or that, that removal is taking place. You know, not only with the student, but with the parents and also our, our teaching staff that are involved, focusing on resetting so that, that depersonalization that takes place, that's a skill set not only for our students, but also the staff that are working with our individuals. And then through January and February, that comprehensive of response to bullying, and then again, focusing again on restorative group conferencing for our high-impact incidents. We're excited with this year, because one of the newly implemented pieces of our code is that we have identified six model schools. And through collaboration with Engaging Schools, these six schools will really serve as signature practices of the implementation of the code. We've identified two elementary, two middle schools, and two high schools. Our two elementary schools are Brunson and Union Cross Elementary. Our two middle schools are Wiley Middle and Jefferson Middle. And our two high schools are Carver High and Reynolds High School. The goal behind this is really to provide intensive support on the implementation of those universal promotion and prevention strategies. So, um, and then highlighting those best practices in the district. And then along those lines, we're going to talk about how we coach and support from Engaging Schools and that district support staff. I'm happy to share that our leaders of schools have just finished up a two-day institute where Engaging Schools was onsite. Our leadership and instructional staff was engaged in two days of facilitation with Engaging Schools, really outlining these practices of universal support and promotion and prevention, and also developing a standardized tool that we will use to monitor the implementation of those universal promotion and prevention strategies. So not only will we be able to utilize that in those six schools, but it will be a tool that we use for accountability services across the board in our district for all schools. Our six model schools will receive that intensive support, so that means quarterly onsite support, where Engaging Schools is coming together, we're bringing these leaders back together, we're reviewing this information, they're receiving coaching and support from Engaging Schools around, you know, those promotion and prevention strategies, but also they're seeing the work that they're doing in the, in their schools, and participating in those site walkthroughs as we calibrate this implement, implementation tool. And then there will also be quarterly remote support meetings between those site visits, as well as district support from our coaching staff to ensure that when those core social, emotional behavior teams are meeting, that our coaches are also there supporting that work and collaborating with Engaging Schools along the way. Another change that we worked through is making some, just, uh, changes to our behavior matrix. We took feedback from administrators, our hearing officers, coaches, and what we have done this year with our behavior matrix is for the behavior violation, so each behavior violation only has one level of consequence. So if you're remembering on the screen, you will see that, that, this is a picture of our previous behavior matrix. So in this example that I have provided here, you'll see that it says inappropriate use of technology. So in our previous behavior matrix, inappropriate use of technology, if I was responding to you as a student, I could look at this and say, potentially, this is a level two, or it's a level three. So there is some subjectivity to that in terms of where the district was standing. So based on feedback from our administrators, coaching and support staff, and our hearing officers, what we have, what we have done is calibrated that to say it's only one level. So in your handout, if you look at page forty-one, you can see that the new matrix actually says that inappropriate use of technology now is just a level two. Now, the other piece to that is administrators still have the ability, and we want them to, to consider the learner that is in front of them. So they have the ability to mitigate down or aggravate up. So if this is the learner's first time being in the office for this offense, then we want them to document that within educators handbook, because there is a space for justification statements. So they're, they're telling us, you know, why did they choose to mitigate down? Or potentially, why did they choose to aggravate up depending on that behavior violation? And so our next steps for accountability in, in terms of our implementation of the code, I kind of touched on that with the design of our implementation tool for promotion and prevention. So that tool is going to be used to assess the implementation. We're going to really drill down into those six model schools, but then we will also be expanding that out. There's also with our area superintendents, collaborating with them, so that we have a look for, for our code implementation in terms of what trainings were supposed to happen and take place, what our discipline infractions are looking like in our responses and the actions that we are coding, are they matching? And that continues within their coaching sessions with their administrators as well. And then also, we're going to continue with our training and professional development strands, just like you saw with our turnkey for schools and our, and with Student Services. We will provide professional development with the collaboration of Engaging Schools to our administrators, beginning in September as well, so that will be ongoing. Are there any questions?
Okay. Yes, board member Brown Gaither?
This must be my night for questions. I want, want to once again request a comparison, because we keep getting case studies. I need a comparison of how this code work is being put into effect. When I previously asked this, it was not on record, it wasn't, whatever. But anyway, so now it's on record. I want a case comparison. At first, I asked for just, I didn't want to know the school names. I said, put school A, B, C. Now, I've made it worse, okay?
Okay, you got some more requirements.
I want an elementary comparison, I want a middle school comparison, I want a high school comparison, and I want to know the actual schools. I know we all made, I mean, I know there was excuses made from board members, from staff, saying that we can't compare because they're not exactly the same. Okay, I get they're not going to be exactly word-for-word the same, but they're close enough. So I would like that, and I want to make sure, because then I want the school names foot on there. Again, comparison of three elementary, three middle, three high.
So you want three elementary, three middle, and three high, and the school names?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have that. Board member?
Of one, like, so of a, of one infraction and how it was handled, correct? So like, within the matrix, one type of infraction, so say use of technology, that at elementary, and three examples of how that was handled.
Right, how each school handled it. So at first, I really didn't want to know the schools, but I might as well ask for the schools.
But I captured it correctly, board member, or board member, Brown Gaither, I captured it correctly?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Board member Kay?
It must be my night, too, because I got lots of things to say. So I have struggled, um, because I am, I believe in the ultimate goal of what the code is to do for our students. I believe wholeheartedly in restorative practices. But I have struggled with, um, what I have as a parent, knowing what I did on the front end of the code, okay? I was a part of the parent advisory panel when we began to implement the code. And I sat with parents in sessions, and I listened to black and white and brown parents of all socioeconomic, um, socioeconomic backgrounds ask for accountability with our code and with our behavior for our students. I sat and I listened to parents and other stakeholders ask for them to be involved, not on the back end, but on the front end of what was happening with behaviors in the classroom. And I have continued to walk along this journey with the code, and I have continued to hear stakeholders throughout the community say, what has happened? Because when we supported this, and when we supported what this code was supposed to be for our schools, we have not seen it brought along the way that we thought it was going to be brought along. We have had a lack of accountability, both with adults and students, and even our parents. And when I start to hear this coming from all sorts of members throughout our community, I have to stand up and say, something's got to give. So this is great, I love that, you know, we're going to have these model schools and all that, but I'm still missing where the true accountability is coming from. Because when I listen to our stakeholders throughout the community, I continue to hear several themes. One, that what was supposed to be a guiding light for our district has not been a guiding light. It has been Principal A says, this is how we do the code in our school. Principal B says, this is how we do the code in our school. Teacher A says, I can't get this to happen in my school, because my principal says their hands are tied because of the code. So at what point are we going to actually do real accountability so we can get to real restoration? Because I still don't feel like we have done anything with that. I feel like we talk a lot about it, but we still don't have what it's, what our educators need in the building to allow them to do what they need to do, because no one's holding the adults accountable. And then I still have parents saying, hey, all these things are happening to my student, but I didn't hear about it until it was way down the road. Why are we not involving the parents at the beginning? So I have some real issue with the lack of accountability. And what are we going to do to actually ride that train and not just talk about riding the train?
So in response to that, one of the things that I will say is, the work that we are doing within the model schools is really addressing a portion of that. When we look at the implementation tool, that is assessing, you know, are we implementing with fidelity across the board, right? So how are we implementing those promotion and prevention strategies? What does it look like within our school building, and then how are we calibrating those? I will also say to this that behavior change such as this is, is systems change, right? This is change over time. And so some of the results that we look to see, and we want them to be immediate, are really lagging, you know, indicators. We, we see those over three to five years. And it takes, it takes work. I'm not, I'm not downplaying what you're saying. I know that, you know, what we do have to do is look at our practices internally, and I think that, again, that goes back to the work that we're doing with the model schools and making sure that we push that out, and that we are using that tool to use, uh, make sure we're measuring fidelity, but then also just having the mindset as adults that this is systems change, it, it's change over time.
I respect that it's the model schools, that's six schools. The rest of the schools want to see change, too. The rest of the schools want to have their adult administrators be held accountable and not go to their administrators and hear, my hands are tied because of the code. So I, I get that it's work, I get that it's not overnight change, but if we're not holding people accountable for what the code says about holding students accountable for behaviors, we can't get to the restoration, because nobody's being held accountable. And that's great, we have six model schools, but what about the rest of the schools? Those educators deserve to have some help, too.
So can I, can I jump in, Shannon?
Yes.
So really, I'm sorry, so the really, the model schools, just so you all know, the concept of, of model schools does not mean you're not supporting everyone else, and, and they're getting training and support. What's different about having model schools, so even as a teacher in a classroom, you have exemplar, and you have exemplars. And so when you want people to achieve something, here's what it looks like when it's actually done well. And so one of the, one thing we, we're getting, when, when we have this person doing it this way, or, or we can't do this, and we can't do that, we're going to send you to one of these six schools who are going to give the, they're going to, they're going to get to that point that they are models, that's what a model school is about, so that I, we can send the other leaders to those schools, or teachers want to visit classrooms in those schools who are implementing those strategies. Those will be, the, the model school part of this is a very intentional part of year two, because we need to see the exemplars. Are they going to be perfect first, after, no? But these six schools have actually are going to be vulnerable enough to put their practice out there, to be scrutinized by experts coming in, to walk through, to give feedback to the, to the, to the administrators there to continuously improve that practice. Through their learning and their getting better, the rest of the system will also get better, as we can see that, and people can go, okay, that's what it looks like when we're using the prevention strategies at the highest level. That's what it looks like when we're, when we are clear on our expectations. So something very important about our, the code, that it's so funny when I hear people think that it's, it's a, a diminishing of expectations, when actually it's the complete opposite of that. You can't have good behavior without very clear expectations in your building and in every single classroom. And here's what they are, and here's what we're going to rise to in our school and our classroom. And so the code is not, there are no expectations, it's the opposite of that. And there is no such thing as leaders saying their hands are tied. And if that happens and someone says that, let me know, because that is not, that is not accurate. No one's hands are tied. The code gives you clarity around what you should be doing in a school building, complete clarity. Accountability, I will say this to large-scale change, and your point about systems change. We are not moving five schools in a district, we are not moving ten, we are moving eighty-one schools with fifty-three thousand students with about seven thousand adults. And so when I say that, it is a change process. Year one, when you think about rolling it out system-wide, here's a new document that's going to lead our work, every school needs to have expectations, we got that out there. Year two is, and, and a lot of support, year two will get even better, and with accountability. This is, this is, so I've led a lot of change efforts over time, and where we are, trust me, I am a very impatient person, and I'm a person with expectations, expectations up to here, which is why I said zero vacancies as we start, and we're monitoring that. I will say that as we go into year two, expectations will increase, accountability will increase. As we go into year three, expectations will increase, accountability will increase. And you will be on board with the changes that we're trying to make. And so what I will say is, I would, I would love it if we could stay the course with doing what's right for kids, which is what our code is about, and it's right for families, it's right for kids and it's right for families, and it's right for all, because when some are failing, we are all failing, just, we are all. And so when our community has violence, we are all impacted by that. And our role in stopping violence is getting this work right. So I love it, I love what you're saying about accountability, that's where we're moving in year two. I've got a great team, we have, it, it is really a work in progress. This is not how we've approached behavior, I'm just going to say. You, over time, you know, there was a time when you do this, you're out. And tell me how that's helped us as a community that is not helping us as a community or as a society. We owe it to all of our kids and all of our families that we're going to do this right. We are committed to doing it right. So I think as we get into year two, we're going to come, I think Richard in a gender review asked, could we get quarterly, quarterly board meeting, public conversations about it? But what I, what we really need is, when we hear individual scenarios or circumstances, we need to surface those, because a lot of generalities are not helpful. I'm just going to be honest with you, like, I can't help if it's just in general, there are some principals that are like, saying my hands, like, I really, like, continue to give us the specifics. Have teachers and buildings work through their building leaders. We don't want to create a culture of mistrust all over the place. Have built principals or teachers concerned, they should go right back into their building leaders and be part of the change that needs to happen on that campus. change that needs to happen on that campus, voice their concerns. And, and so there, there are processes that lead to change, but I will tell you, we are going into year two at a better place than we were at the beginning of last year, as far as, we don't have to reteach, yes, you got to learn the new consequence matrix, we got to learn that, but we're going to continue doing the calibrations. I'm going to invite the board to every calibration exercise that we do with principals. You are welcome to sit in the room and calibrate with them and hear the conversation. Guys, let them know when those sessions are, because I want you to hear what those conversations are, if you have time, I know many of you do not, but if you have time, please, please join us. Accountability, the team that is meeting on the side, and Effie's in that, and some of Andy's team, and some of the others that are meeting, they're creating the, the measures of accountability, the accountability tools. And that is when you walk into a school, this is what we are seeing, this is what can be better, and it's very clear to a building leader what needs to be better, and then the area super being there to coach around that. Last year, as we were rolling this out, we were just like, rolling out all this training, 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 without the tools of walking back in then and accountability. But I will tell you, to make change stick, you have to have a really great balance of support and accountability. And it's just like with teachers in a classroom. When a teacher's struggling with behavior, you're not, account, you're not going to just, accountability in itself is not going to change, help them change their practice. It's a high level of support, followed by, I'm going to come back in and, and we're going to, we're going to work together. Last year was about working together and lifting an entire change in our system. So what I, what I will say is, I would like, I've seen a lot of change over time, and change does take time, and no, is it as fast enough for all of us as we would like it? No. But it is a process, and going into year two, it's going to get better. And if, and if, and I just want you all to watch that shift, and then in year three, watch that shift, and there's going to be major changes. And it, and it starts with us believing, yes, we have the expectations, we believe it can happen, and we're going to rise to those expectations. So honestly, and I'll say this again, like, failure of this is really not an option. So we're going to stay the course, and we're going to get it right.
So I, I did want to just, I wanted to say that, for me, one of the hardest parts of being in this role is sometimes, I think, being the buffer between expectations of us as board members and our work, and the work that, the work that we're doing as a district, and what is reality and what is feasible, right? Because I think that if, what, what, every time we talk about the code and we talk about our progress, I always think about, for me, just how sometimes what I hear when I'm out and I'm talking to staff in buildings is the opposite of what we're hearing here. And we've talked a lot about how to bridge that gap, what are we doing to be able to bridge that gap? Because I want to, I want to, because I think when concerns are kind of brought up, I, I don't, I don't want, I know that sometimes it can feel as though we're applying some pressure, but sometimes the, the pressure comes from the fact that pressure's being applied to us. When I'm attending an event and somebody runs up to me and they said, it's code, you all need to get rid of this code. And in my head, I'm like, what is the, what is the problem with the code? Because everything I'm hearing is that our intention and, and the work that we're doing, and I'm also seeing good work. And also to the point, I've heard the point multiple times about, you know, teachers getting the response from their building leaders that their hands are tied. And, and the first thing I'm saying is like, if people's hands are tied, why do we have so many suspensions? Why do we continue to see those numbers the way that those numbers are? So it's not, in my opinion, that people's hands are tied. I think a lot of times, it's about the, the reaction that people want is connected, I think, to what previous expectations were, which in my opinion is about behavior. And I think, Ms. Dobson, you can speak to behavior in that shifting a mindset takes an excruciating amount of time. If you have been teaching for 20 years, and what you used to do with a student, you can't do anymore, because we're asking you to shift your mindset. That is hard work. And I think that, to me, I want, I want for things to happen overnight. And it's hard when we have to kind of be the buffer and to kind of stand in the gap and say, just be patient, but I think that we have to continue to do that with ourselves. And also, I think, ask for our teachers in our classrooms and our people in our buildings to just be patient with the process, because it's going to take some time, although it's frustrating.
May I just add to that also, Ms. Han, you took the words out of my mouth, because when you look at these four pages of consequences and behaviors, this has really not changed over time. The level one, level two, level three, level four, we've had this for a long time in our district. What has to change, it's like, as you're saying, is the mindset. It's not getting him or her out, it's how to work with him, her, family and community. That is a major mindset. When some of us are used to writing a kid up, immediately, if I don't get a response from my administrator in 24 hours, and he or she's not doing their job, and, you know, all of us will say in this room, probably from day one, we've had conversations, the first thing you do as teachers is what, step one is, contact a parent. And some of us do a great job of doing that, but then there are others who don't, we get busy, like, Ms. Watts, I didn't have time to do that this week, so I'm, now I'm on level three, but I got busy, I didn't contact level one. So this has not changed. This is the mindset of how we're going to approach that young person and parents and community to deal with restorative practices and to deal with giving them hope, and giving teachers the, the tools they need to feel like they're not, quote, abandoned. And we've got to make sure that that also happens in this process.
Yeah, and Shannon, I have a question for you, because I think we all have heard about code of conduct, you know, I get texts and emails and et cetera. Are we missing it in the, in the area of the process for feedback? Like, what is that process that we have established? Of course, you want to get feedback from principals, but feedback from teachers, from parents, and from students, because I think the majority of us will hear from, from parents. So what's that, what's the established process for feedback that we can go back and tweak and change and do whatever we need to do?
So there's a couple of options. So at the end of every single training session, we collect feedback that engaging schools actually aggregates for us and shares out. If you'll remember, at the end of last year, we did a feedback session where we invited every single school to bring their core behavior team, well, a couple of members, and we conducted interviews and we collected their feedback on, is the code working, how is their teaming working? And we strategically did that in a place where we wanted to hear from them, we wanted to collect the information like you all are gathering and hearing in emails. And so currently, other than those, the surveys and the trainings and those...
...the feedback sessions also.
So that's ongoing. So at almost every single one of those professional development sessions, there is a feedback information tool that is provided, and we review that in our sessions with engaging schools and use that to, to calibrate and respond to even what strategies that we're picking, how we're moving forward into this year.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, thanks. Our next order of business is action items. First, consider approval of activity bus purchase. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? So a motion was made by Ms. Crowley, a second by Ms. Miller, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That's unanimous, thanks. Next, consider approval of budget amendment number seven, number eight, number nine, and number 10. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion was made by Ms. Crowley, Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Brown Gaither, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the 2324 Title I application. Do I have a motion?
So...
Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Board Member Watts, a second by Board Member Miller, do I have any discussion?
I do have a, a comment to make. It, it does concern me, to Reverend Parrish's point, about a high number of students at schools who don't, the school itself does not qualify for Title I funding, or it does, but we don't go down that low, but yet the school has a significant number of students who could benefit from that. And, and I'm, you know, I get it that we can't, we can't legally have the funding follow the student, but I would be for lowering that threshold to what the federal level allows us to. I mean, we, we have schools that we recently named as Title I who had more Title I students than some of our Title I schools.
But it's not per kid.
You know, that's, that's significant. And, and those schools are now getting resources to address the needs of those students. I mean, we're talking about at some schools, it's been over 800, 800 kids. That's a lot of kids to get services. And I guess my, my question would be, is by identifying at a lower level, I think, isn't the lowest level the 40% threshold?
Thirty-five.
What, what would we be doing, how would we detract? Because the pot does not get bigger, the pot is the pot.
And, and we, and there continues to be reductions from the federal government. What I will say is, the lower you go in the percentage to 30, you're, you're going to very greatly pull funds from some of our schools that have concentrations of poverty. So in other words, a, a school with 35% is not a school with 90% poverty. And so what I will tell you is, as you, as you move those dollars, and we can, we, this is what we'll do for the board, we will get you the list and what we are giving people at the 50% threshold, or 40, Kelly, we're at 50, or 40, what are we at right now?
Forty-nine point two.
Forty-nine point, right. So we'll get, we'll show you the list, just so you can see it, of what happens to the dollars to schools with concentrations of poverty, when we go down to schools with 35. And it decreases the amount so much that you cannot, you, you just cannot really have, like, focus your efforts. And, and again, there is a big difference. As a former principal in a school with 98% for a new sludge, and even one with 80, there was a major difference. And to take it down to 50 or 35, there is a major difference in the needs, the overarching needs of the kids. So I just, I want you all to know that, but I think just for your sake, would you, would you want to see what that would do to the dollars? Because a school like Cook, that doesn't have a lot of students, but relies heavily on that, you know, could end up getting $50,000 a year in, in Title I, and that is not advantageous. There is not much you can do with that. So I just want you all to be aware of that. We are very, very intentional with how we figure out what to give. Now, there are other funds we can support the other schools with, and that's what we've done. We have extended learning dollars that we give schools for tutoring and other resources. We've provided, and I know there's only one more year of ESER, but we've provided ESER funds for mentoring programs and for other programs across the board to all schools. So we are filling in those gaps in other ways.
Ms. McManus, maybe then that'd be another piece we can add to this discussion, would be that to see what funds are being sent to the schools beyond Title I for support, so if it's at-risk dollars or other dollars that are being there to support schools as well, that would get a bigger picture of all the money that's coming in besides just your ADMs.
Absolutely.
I'd also like to see what's actually being spent, because I hear about schools getting Title I funds and they can't even spend it all in a year. And maybe that's just, you know, nonsense, maybe that's just not happening.
We can, oops, sorry, we can get you guys some reports that show that, about what schools are spending, what their balances were. Trust me, that's what we look at as well, when we're making decisions, it's, all right, what are we spending our dollars on, and is there a lot of money left? Some of our schools have gotten other grants, and so now you're sitting with millions of dollars due to, you know, they used to be called SIC grants, but like, other grants that come from different places. And so sometimes having more does not mean better, better, better use of those dollars. But we, we'll get you, so two things, we'll get you what it would be if we actually went down to 35, so you can actually see the impact on some of our schools that are getting more funding because we're at the 49%. And then we'll get you balances, like last year, what schools, Kelly, I'm saying it out loud, so to make sure I'm getting, balances, what schools spent their dollars on last year, and what were like leftover funds that they might not have spent. Is that, is that good?
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion passes eight to one. Next, consider approval of the annual Head Start MOU. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Winston Staffing Solutions Contract for Child Nutrition Temporary Staffing Services. Do I have a motion? With no motion, it fails. Next, consider approval of continuing contract with the UVA Darden Curry Partnership for Leaders in Education. The UVA...
I approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Watts, any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Our next order of business is announcements. Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023 will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. Before we begin a section of our meeting in which anyone can comment on almost anything, let me say to our Cable Two viewers, thank you for watching, this will conclude our broadcast.